All right. Item C, Audience portion. Jill, did we have anybody sign up?
We do know.
Okay. Item D, Approval of the Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. A Iola?
Aye.
Mrs. S Iola?
Aye.
Mrs. Heinz?
Aye.
Mr. Colomets?
Aye.
Right. Three. Send this agenda.
And make the recommendation to approve personnel listed in item A.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. A Iola?
Aye.
Mrs. S Iola?
Aye.
Mrs. Heinz?
Aye.
Mr. Colomets?
Aye.
Item four, Minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, the special board meeting, uh, and the two special, sorry, um.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on May 12th and the special board meetings that occurred on May 30th and June 16th as presented. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. A Iola?
Aye.
Mrs. S Iola?
Aye.
Mrs. Heinz?
Aye.
Mr. Colomets?
Aye.
All right. Item five. Hi, I only see familiar faces in the room. Oh, Kim is online. Hi, Kim. Hi, Kim. Can you hear us?
I can. Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for inviting me.
Are you going to be providing us with the financial update?
Um, yes. Would you like me to share my screen at this moment? I, sorry, it kind of cut out there for a minute as I was joining.
That's okay. If you're ready, we're ready.
Okay, perfect. I had to request. Um, I believe in your packet, you have received all of the, the budget reports. The request was to have the entire budget and then broken down by each department. So you've received several different pages at this moment. So the one that I'm looking at is the overview of the entire district. Um, so looking at the East Otero Budget Report Summary is the one that I'm looking at, just to give you, an idea on where we're at as of May 31st. If you look at the third column in, this is your year-to-date activity from July through May. I just want to point out that we are still unaudited. The audit is still going on from last fiscal year, so these numbers may change a little bit. All depending on what comes up with the audit. But currently, our financials as of May look very healthy. Um, I know we got our accruals coming up and such, coming in May, or, I mean, in June here and, but overall, um, your main financials are very healthy. If you look at this, um, center column, you'll see that in the operating fund, we are at a positive $962,000 as of May 31st. And I'll stop right there and see if anybody has any questions at this point.
It is in the budget and it's called the Proposed Budget.
Yes, I think you guys will talk to the.
Okay, thank you.
So if we're looking at what our finances are as of May, we're looking pretty healthy at this moment. For the operating fund. I do know, um, I do want to report that our grant coordinator with Abacus did meet with, Shay, I believe it was, uh, last week regarding grants. So we will be getting some grants, um, drawdowns this month or with, within this week. So this way we can get those revenues brought in as well for this current year.
And that's something that Shay had been working with me, uh, maybe now with TNTP this last week, um, cause that to become a hiccup, but that's something that Shay has met with me, um, to make sure that we're getting dialed in as well.
What is other objects?
Other objects, um, the 0800 codes, um. We'd have to look, those are a lot of dues and fees usually fall in that category. Um, so we'd have to take a look at the individual accounts to see exactly what is falling in that category. Um, something with this budget report summary, I wanted to try and give you a, a bigger picture. So let me kind of explain a little bit more on these columns. I know we were talking about where are we at currently financially. But looking at this one-page document, trying to summarize it for you. Um, looking at the very first column is going to be the proposed budget that we spoke about the last time Sarah and I were on with you guys. Um, we have refined it a little bit with, um, Richie and Jared and Shay and, um, other, I believe, directors were involved. I'm not sure who was all involved on that side at the school. Um, the second column in is what is our current budget for the fiscal year 2425. Third column, as I mentioned, is our year-to-date activity. And I wanted to give you some, um, historical as well. So you have basically like, you know, four years, almost five years of, um, activity. I went back, um, last year is the actual activity that is in your current program. Um, and just remember that this is unaudited, so I'm expecting that to change. And then the, the very far column is 2223 actual figures.
I asked the question on the 0700 property line item. Do we know when the 2223 actual is over a million dollars? When generally we're around the 100, 150,000 mark?
A lot of that I found was ESSER funds, so we received a lot of that COVID money and that's where it fell into is, um, property improvements and such. Um, Jared or, I, I know you guys are, are new in the financial area. Do you know anything that would have fallen in that, in that school year?
Probably the age gap, pretty well.
Yeah, the age gap already, I think there was maybe some cameras and such.
That's just a large difference from what we budget there, so just double checking.
Yep. No, great question. Lot of times we get a lot of that extra money and we go, oh, that looks good. But then a couple of years later, we're like, whoa, wait a minute, what happened? So. Other questions on the general fund?
Yes, I just have one question under, uh, other sources. Five thousand?
Okay.
Why is, um, what's the difference there between the proposed budget for 2526 and then the 2425? That's almost half. What is that?
0500s would fall under travel. It would fall under, um, some utilities. I'd have to take a look at, you know, exactly what was requested under those object codes from each department level.
No, not, not 0500. I, I'm sorry, five thousand.
Oh, the other sources?
Yeah, the other sources, six line down at the top.
Okay. That is our revenues and that would be our transfer line, and that is a great question. So that was, um, we have been transferring a, a certain dollar amount to capital reserves for special projects. And when we, um, Sarah and I spoke with, um, Reese and Jared and Heather and it was determined that we did not need to transfer as much for capital projects this school year. And I believe, uh, if somebody else could, Jared or, or Richie, I believe Heather said it was just a number that was just kind of put in there every single year when we were asking about it.
Yeah, historically, I think what they've done in the past was about 700,000. Is what they usually put into capital. So I think that's what they were following suit on. Is that the same one we're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's. That's where I'm at. It was so, for last year, we put one, 1.2 million into Ca, into the Capital Reserve Fund. Would that be right?
Correct.
And so this year we're proposing to put 560 in the Capital Reserve Fund, right?
That is correct.
That's a big difference.
It is a big difference. Don't you remember the long conversations we had regarding that? Well, maybe you missed it, right? It was fun.
I'll go back and look at the tape. So where, where in this, uh, where, how much do we have in the Capital Reserve Fund?
In the Capital Reserve Fund? So I'm going to jump over to this uniform budget summary because that'll give us our balances. So this is the uniform budget summary. Um, because all of those other reports just kind of give us just the revenues and expenses. And at this point, I, you, you're asking for balances. Okay? So what I'm doing is looking at capital reserves. I'm looking at what our uniform budget summary. Um, we are beginning fund balance. We're expecting to be 1.3 million dollars. So our, uh, beginning balance plus revenues, we're expecting at the 1.372 with our, our transfers. And if I go all the way to the bottom, we will end it with the 1.32. So we're not expecting to spend anything in capital reserves this year. We have, we have basically booked 60,000 just in case at this point because there is nothing planned.
We initially started setting aside so much money for that Capital Reserves project fund so we can start to do larger projects that our district needed with our aging infrastructure. Um, we wanted to get every building on a rotating schedule to have improvements made, whether it be flooring, carpeting, painting. Uh, so we started setting aside all that extra money so we can do it. And also we kind of built ourselves a what-if home. What if we needed a bus and we didn't get special funding to help us? We had the money to get what we needed. Incidentally enough, we need a very big roof.
Yeah. Or the buses and that too.
Um, I don't know if they've been designated there, but we always told ourselves that if we needed it and we couldn't get any funds to help cover, that we had enough set aside to move it over if necessary. But I don't think.
So we have two more coming up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we do. We, we put those, but those weren't in our general capital reserves rotating schedule, wasn't it?
No, but I think the funds were being pulled from our capital.
One's already landed and one we gotta land probably at the time now.
Okay, so then did this amount include that bus already taken out of that?
Those are recorded and paid for, so that does reflect these. Part of why the capital fund dropped so low was one incorrect by Ram Kim that was gonna help us balance the budget, simply because we haven't heard those words in a long time. And so we budgeted the 60 some for repairs that we needed at the high school. But we can also revisit this come December where we really do the good fine on budget. And if we need to add to whatever we can. But simply since it was a balanced budget, we hadn't heard that, we elected to say, hey, let's trim some of the capital stuff for right now.
I won't get to be here for those discussions in November or December because I'll be done in November. So let me just say that it's better to have and not need than need and not have.
Can I ask a question, just kind of being naive and not here? Like we discussed, it was, it seemed like it was, it was just a number that was constantly getting pooled. Do you guys know if there was discussions about like the math behind getting to that number? Just something that give us a little bit more rationale, just as we start to look at this piece? Uh, because it was quite a bit of money, um, and I see the, the benefit of doing that. I just wasn't quite sure how to follow that, that process too. I just didn't know if you guys could.
Sure, there was some rhyme and reason behind it right this moment. I can't just, it was quite some time ago we did that. I'll see what I can find for you.
Cool, and, and I can drive a little bit, look back at, uh, videos as well. I just, as also as, as we try to sift through that piece, was trying to gain a better understanding for being there too.
There was no videos at that time, so I'll get through them, do some readings of them. There's no videos to watch.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Like I said, just trying to get a better understanding for that piece.
Do you have any other questions? Anybody else? I don't think we have any other questions on that piece. Is there anything else you'd like to go over with us?
Um, if you had any other questions, I'm just going to go back over to the summary sheet that we had. Um, what I, like, what I explained earlier was, uh, you, each one, we just kind of focused on general fund with this. If you go to the next page, you'll be able to see the insurance reserve. So we do that transfer every single year with the insurance reserve, um, transfer. So each, each fund, as you will notice, is balanced. But the operating fund, we are showing a little bit of a profit of $8,000 at this moment. And like Richie had mentioned was, what we'll do is we'll revisit the, the budgets in December. Uh, you know, we'll get starting in November and December, starting to talk about revisiting the budgets. Currently, we're budgeting at 13.055 students, uh, as our student, um, count. So we're just going to kind of keep our fingers crossed, go for our, you know, look for our October count and, and watch those fundings at this moment. Okay? So if you would like me to go through each fund, otherwise, like, uh, you know, like I said, everything is, is fully balanced at this moment. Um, I know there's a lot of information here for you, so, um, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Anybody have a question? So at one time we had, uh, some issues where things needed to be transferred to the right account. All, all of that, I assume is done, taken care of, it's all good?
I have. I am fully balanced through May. That is correct. Um, so looking at all the inter-fund transfers and the inter-fund activities, they should be fully balanced as well. Um, this week I will be going through and, and making suggestions on any budget transfers that are still outstanding. So that is on my agenda yet. I wanted to make sure I got your budget spot on first before I jumped into that the rest of the week.
Anything else? Anybody?
Well, I guess I just want to make sure I get this, I'm understanding this. So our total budget is 16.9 million dollars. Is that right?
That is correct for revenue.
Revenue. And out of that, we get 14 million from the state, right?
That is correct.
And we generate 3 million locally.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is this something that we're going to be getting like monthly type snapshot summary on what we're doing?
I'll gladly give you whatever you would like, uh, whenever you would like. You tell me and, you know, we can work together. Um, I like to present income statement summaries each month, once they're done. Um, this one obviously is based off a budget. So what I'll do is, you know, have year-to-date, and if you would like a couple of prior years, those kind of things, I'll include it. So I'll work with the team internally and, and create a financial report and we can keep adjusting. You, you know, you just tell me what you're looking for and I'll gladly, you know, build as you need.
And, and, and having kind of conversations with, with some other supers as well around that same topic kind of depends, I guess, by what the board is wanting and what their expectations are for frequency and things like that. Um, something I was really excited about with, with Richie, especially the situation we're in, uh, with not having a business manager at the moment, the amount of capabilities and things that Abacus can provide and do that Kim is already providing and doing for us, like getting those prepared, ready to go, um, is a huge asset. It is, it's gigantic.
I think for, you know, a little while, we didn't have regular financial updates just because things were, uh, in progress. I'd like to see it consistently on a monthly basis and trust but verified. Try to cure some of our trauma and.
Yes, I, I want, I 100% support that side. I think that would be a great move for the district to just continue to enhance our, you know, our transparency, especially the financial side. I think that's huge.
I didn't get a whole lot out of the one-page bank balance sheets that we used to get. Or we didn't get anything.
Kim could make this report as plain Jane or as in-depth as you want, so. That was, I'm not going to hurt, she was willing to give you guys wherever you'd like, every month.
Yeah, I have several reports in mind that I create for other boards, um, like a month over month. So basically, you're going to have 12 months on your report. What did we spend in January, February, March? So if you want something like that, I can create something like that. On balance sheet, you'll see when you, when Sarah's on, she had a conflict, two board meetings tonight, so, um, she loves her some balance sheets. So balance sheet is always our first report that we always share out. Got to know where your cash is. You got to know where your, you know, where are we at? So right now I'm comfortable knowing your cash with the operating account. We're at 2.4 million dollars currently, so I feel very comfortable with where we're at and where we're looking at at this moment. You know, so those are just kind of things that we're always looking for. Okay?
I think that's great. Thank you.
No problem, no problem.
Does anybody else have anything for Kim?
Thank you. Would you mind staying on for a sec or if you want to jump in on the conversation we had concerning the Chromebooks that we talked about earlier this afternoon?
Sure can.
We either jump to that very quick or however you'd like to do that.
We can't drop it in the agenda, but she can tell us about it, yeah?
Or we can hold off. And if you don't mind just hanging on, then when we get to that point, if that's okay? Sorry, I just dropped the bell there, so please.
So Chromebook is down a long way. So can you just include that in part of your update so we don't keep you half the night?
As we, sure, no problem. As we were going through the budget report summary and going through each individual, um, area, there was, I'm just getting back up here. So I'm going to go over to the district-wide budget one. So Jared, um, Richie and I had a conversation regarding the district would like to purchase some additional Chromebooks and such like that. Um, as we were balancing the budget and during one of our meetings, we did drop the technology supplies down and it did not include the Chromebooks. But what the intention is, is when we get the updated, um, state, um, the PPR, um, our state count, our intention in January is to revise the budget, include any new Chromebooks that are going to be needed for any, you know, any of our students at that point.
Just Sarah, we dropped the technology funding piece balance down. How much we set aside for that? Is that what you just said?
How much we set aside for that was dropped down, um, when they were working on that budget piece. Um, and then as we met and looked at the update that we'll discuss later for those Chromebooks for going into next year, I can't remember the exact name or the exact number of them. Um, I was just kind of cross-referencing back and forth, making sure everything was squared away. And I couldn't find those within the budget and we had realized that, um, we just didn't account for them. Remember they had lowered that tech fee or that tech budget originally. So we're going to have to go back and look at that tech piece to see where we can add that back in.
Yeah, currently with like, with the salaries and the benefits side of it, we have budgeted, um, every single staff member to have benefits when most staff members or some staff members do not. Or they elected, um, partially during the year, those kind of things. So we feel that we are going to be able to subsid, you know, fill in that gap at that point.
Just a reminder, we cannot have an infinite conversation regarding Chromebooks until we get there. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do we have anything else for Kim? You're more than welcome to join us if you want to. If you don't, I won't hold it against you.
All right. Well, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, moving on to item B, Building Safe Schools Report from the Building Principals.
Everybody.
Hi.
How we doing?
Doing.
We just want to go down the, down the line. Great. Um, so the primary school, uh, tracks the same data as every year and that starts with enrollment. Um, you guys got a copy of these, correct?
We do.
Okay, so you can see all the way back, um, on my report from, uh, 2012, 13 school year to this current school year. Um, we have, uh, dropped obviously since 2012, our enrollment, right now we're sitting around 290. I, I can't say why our enrollment is dropping, but it is slowly dropping. Um, every year it's stayed around the 280, 290 mark the last three years. Uh, next year's kindergarten class, uh, is kind of unpredictable. We had, I don't quote me on this, but I believe around 70 CVS um, students. Only 30 kids came to kindergarten roundup to pre-register. So we expect a lot to come, obviously, at registration and register, but um, our kindergarten roundup was not, uh, well-attended unfortunately. So that's something that we're going to think about and work on, um, in the future, but that's where we're sitting right now. Um, average daily attendance rate, we're at an 89.53%, just a slight bit down from last year, which was 90%. I want to give a shout out to Haley back there. Um, our culture goal next year is really going to be around an attendance initiative, uh, and that's district-wide. So, um, some of the other schools may talk about, um, some very specific things that they have going on. I know Haley has created a district initiative that will do monthly incentives, will add it into our assemblies. Um, she's worked really hard on this, so we're excited for, for that push, um, just to get that attendance rate and our, um, chronic absenteeism rate, uh, down. So attendance rate up, chronic absenteeism down is the goal next year. Um, for our discipline, uh, we. Um, for our discipline, uh, we had ten out of school suspensions. Uh, six were detrimental behavior, three were habitual disruption and, uh, one was defiance. We talked at DAC a little bit about how we really feel that our suspension rates are low. Because we're able to provide opportunities for, um, in-school, um, counseling services. That in the past has been through Willow Tree. We're really advocating to keep our counselor, um, Patrick Grego on, uh, if at all possible. But I know that comes down with the funds, um, that's been paid through ESER. Uh, we're hoping for, um, opportunities for whoever comes in, uh, potentially to be able to bill Medicaid services. Uh, but Haley was also working as a math for us too. So just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, Dibbles, we're really proud. Um, we've made a large push in our reading program. I've talked about that year after year. And, uh, the data is just showing that progress is, um, steady. We've had, uh, seventy eight percent of our students were on benchmark. Our second grade class, uh, seventy six percent of them, the highest percentage, um, ever since twenty sixteen. Uh, for our second grade students to be, uh, benchmarks. So really proud of all of our grade levels, um, just for working hard on that. NWA, uh, map is, uh, low. It, it doesn't look great. Our kindergarten team, uh, did fall into a high achievement, high growth quadrant. Um, and they were the team that piloted the new math program that you just approved, uh, for purchase. So we're really excited. That was without training. That was without support, really. It was just, um, the instructional coach planning with them and having discussions around what these lessons entail. So we're really looking forward to us implementing that K six and seeing hopefully a good difference, um, in our math scores. Math will be our focus for our PLCs next year, um, and just kind of shift from, continue the work that we've done in reading, but shift our minds to math a little bit more next year. Um, and that's, I believe, it for us at the primary. Do you guys have any questions for us?
On Dibbles, does it get a lot harder, like the jump from first grade to second grade versus kindergarten to first grade?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah. So it adds new skills as they go through, um. The kindergartners, uh, do not have to read the passages by first grade, middle of year. They have to read a passage in one minute. It's checking for fluency and accuracy. In second grade, the percent of fluency and accuracy increases. So I believe they have to be at ninety nine percent accurate, um, to read that passage and be considered a benchmark.
Okay.
So it just slightly increases.
It looks like it goes from first grade there, you know, up there and then there's like a drop.
Yeah. And historically, we saw a huge drop in first grade. Um, cause those kids weren't prepared to read that passage and we worked really hard on prepping them to read. Um, so we kind of, uh, started to close that gap from Kinder to first, but we're still seeing a gap from first to second. So that's been a big focus for us and PLCs too, and just making sure that we're gripping kids during our flooding time, making sure that they're leveled. During that tier two instruction, they're still receiving tier one, but at tier two, they're grouped viability to really hone in what skills they need specifically. Um, but yeah, it does increase, um, that expectation for accuracy and fluency. They're expected to read quicker and be more accurate when they are doing that reading in the second grade. When did we hold our kindergarten roundup? When did we hold it? Uh, April tenth, I believe, was a Friday. Um, so we don't have, usually in the past, we canceled school that day. Um, we didn't have to do that. We've done that two years in a row and we turned to try to get more people coming in. We turned it also into a transition event. So we do a signing table and we put that on Facebook. People like, oh. That kind of reminds them, super cute. But, um, yeah, I don't know. We, we advertise on all the major outlets.
During regular business hours though?
What do you mean? Like, like radio?
Eleven in the morning or what time is it at?
On which, on which outlet?
No, no, not social media. What time is your event?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it goes from ten to four. We get most people during the lunch hour, um, close to, it might go till four thirty. But yeah. Yeah. I don't know if people, because we also ask that they come to registration. I don't know if they're just like, well, we'll just go to registration and not do pre-registration. Um, but we're really, we've got to do something to hopefully try to get them to pre-registration because it helps us know. How we can place kids in classes. We just. Need to do some thinking around how we can fix that or change it. Maybe we need to do something totally different than we've ever done before too. I don't know.
Previously, didn't you guys go out to a few of the daycares and do it, or not the daycares, the preschools? And do kindergarten roundup at the preschool location?
Yeah, in the past, prior to COVID, we went to CDS and we did it there. It was actually, um. It helped with parents because they were coming in to pick up their kids. So at dismissal, we did get more parents that way. Uh, but the, the reason that we stopped doing that was because we were actually testing them there. And then at the end, we get that big rush of parents coming in to, to come do that pre-registration step. Um, this year we opted not to do a test unless parents requested one, which they absolutely could. If you wanted to test your kiddo, we could have them tested right there. But there's actually such a gap between April and the beginning of school year. That data wasn't super usable for us to be honest. We're not denying kids unless they're prior to the cutoff. If they're of age to come to kindergarten or accepting them, I think it was an outdated practice. So we changed that. Yeah. We do, um, my registrar goes to, um, all the preschools. She gives the information out to them to give out to their parents. So she does a big push that way, I feel.
Yeah, that was just a.
Do you think parents don't see the necessity of they're like, well, my kid's not going to be tested. I'm not going to miss work or?
No, because attendance was about the same as it was last year. Um, and we did the same pro, we tested last year. Um, this was the first year that we didn't do that. I think they just think that it's not registration, that they're just going to wait until the beginning of year at registration. And, and do it then. So, um, I don't, maybe they just don't want to come twice. So they just figure they'll come the one time at registration and call it good.
Maybe, uh, utilizing the social media avenues to just tell how important it is to come to kindergarten roundup in advance. We use that data to do this, this, this. So maybe so they can see that there's a little more to it than, well, I'm going to do it at registration. I don't want her to.
The purpose of it too, absolutely. Cause this year they probably will not find out who their classroom teacher is at registration. Where in the past we may be, would have been able to get that information. But with only thirty registered. You probably will not make those classes until after registration.
Is that something that has to be done in person or can we utilize like an online pre-registration?
They can do it online. Um, so it is open for online pre-registration, which we did open it back up after kindergarten roundup. For a period of time because we did have such low attendance where we opened it up again for another two week span, I believe it was. Um, put out another push, hey, just register online. Um, they can bring the documents, like their certificate and things, um, at registration, but they can pre-register from their home. All of it can be done online. To come in person is just to do the transition activities, meet the teachers, see the classrooms, things like that.
Anything else, Julie?
Thank you.
All right, buddy. That's you.
Okay. I'm going to start with the academics since we ended with Julie on that and since we're talking about Dibbles and NWA. Um, so it's not in the safe score where I don't get the academic end. I really didn't want to talk about our Dibbles a little bit and then NWA. So, um, for our Dibbles, we do, um, give it for through six. Um, we did notice a trend that, um. Our, we're scoring significantly really high in our accuracy in the Dibbles, um, that part of the assessment. And we're still need some work on the comprehension. We are making a shift next year where we're only, um, going to administer the Dibbles K three. We're not going to do it for fourth, fifth and sixth. So that's going to be a change. We're really wanting to focus more on that comprehension and the NWA. Uh, more than, you know, how fast the kids could read that kind of stuff. That's important, but not as important as, uh, the things that go with NWA. So we are really wanting to focus on the comprehension piece and the, um, writing, um, to the, to the reading. That's huge on the CMAS. Um, so for the, um, Dibbles, we did, like I said, accuracy was pretty high. We need to work on the comprehension. We know that. And then some trends that we also saw from the Dibbles was that we had a lot of our kids that were at, uh, benchmark moved to above. Um, so we saw big growth from our, um, high kiddos went up significantly a lot higher than our kiddos who still have, are showing a deficit in their reading. So we really want to work on, um, how to support them a little bit more. We feel like we implemented, um. Um, implementing the wonders and really working on some more, um, higher, higher achieving. Uh, we did more higher level thinking questions this year. That was a big push with PLCs. Um, we feel like we really, uh. Hit home with the, with the kids that are higher anyway. So we really need to work on the kiddos that are a little bit below, uh, grade level with the reading. And that's the same with the math. We did, um, implement some, um, different things instead of just Saxon. So we could use a lot of Zern. And so Zern is a lot different than Saxon and it was a big struggle at the start of the year. But it is very similar to what illustrative math is going to, um, is going to be for this next year. So we feel like it's a great exposure for them for next year. But we do feel like, um, we did see a lot of big growth with our high, higher students in the math as well for the NWA. Um, for the NWA, when we, uh, let's see, last year we were at thirty seven percent of the school was, uh, at, um. At or above their growth. And this year we jumped up to forty four percent. Um, so we may, did see some increase there. And then for the NWA reading, we went from thirty seven and then up to fifty percent. So that's the highest that we've been like getting to the fifties is huge because we space, like Julie said, NWA, NWA scores have been a little bit low. Like in the thirties has been where we've like stayed for the last few years. So getting to the forties and now into the fifties, um, has been really awesome for us this year. So we're excited about that growth. Uh, let's see. For the safe school reports, any questions on the academic part of that?
Um, I don't have a question on percentage increases, but I do have a question about, you said that we went from Saxon to partially using Zern. Just so we're all on the same page, we will not be deviating from the new math curriculum. We know just that everyone across the board is using the same thing.
Yes.
No additional anythings until we can see what this program is.
Okay. Yeah. And so for those of you that are new to the, um, new to the board, so what we had Saxon, that's the program that we've been using. Um, from what feedback we got from Sam Schneider last year, Saxon was just not exposing our kids to the level of rigor that they needed to. Saxon wasn't even hitting the standards that were grade level appropriate. And so he was very concerned about us using Saxon. Fully implementing it without having to supplement with something where the kids are getting exposed to what they need. So that's why we pulled in Zern, which is a, it was a free curriculum, which was on the recommended CDE list for math. And so we decided to supplement as much as we could with that, knowing that, um, from Sam's recommendation, it was a better route to go to help our kids. And obviously we saw some growth with the math. So we were really excited for that too. So that's one of the reasons why we, they're the reason why we kind of went to Zern and to help us with that. Cause we knew that Saxon was just not really the route to go. It was a lot, a big ask for our teachers because they implemented it with no training whatsoever. It was tough. Um, but you know, kudos to them because they hit the ground running with it and they did a great job. Um, trying to make sure that the kids were exposed to what they needed to help them for the next grade level.
It's an understandable question too, because of our history and how like, like she's saying, we were using Saxon, we were using IM, they were using Zern. We were all over the place and we knew that. Uh, but this curriculum will be used with integrity. And that's what TNTP is really supporting us with this next year too, is PLC structures that are around internalizing these lesson plans. So that they're understood and taught well. Um, so that's, uh, I know for sure that's where we're focusing our PLC. I believe you're doing the same, same thing. Yep.
And I guess just some of the reasoning behind the question, you know, we don't dictate to you guys which curriculum to use. We let you dictate, dictate that to us. So I want to make sure that, you know, being conservators of the tax dollars, we're spending them wisely. And when we purchase a very large curriculum like Saxon, then we can go back and then feel good about, okay, well, we spent this much money. But actually we weren't even really using it. We were using a free service through CDE to supplement because they didn't get what they need. So just being good conservators of tax dollars.
Totally valid.
Getting everybody on the same page. So when we say we're all learning the same math curriculum, you know, Sarah doesn't have to teach her kids something different than what I'm teaching mine. Is going to simplify a lot of issues I think we have.
There is some differentiation that's going to need to happen because, um, through our curriculum work over the summer, the teachers were talking a lot about. Some of this content is much higher level than what those kiddos have been exposed to. But even that differentiation will be supported and supplemented through IM. So we won't be going outside of IM. We'll be using IM to provide those supports and supplements, if that makes sense. We'll stay within the curriculum. All right.
Working towards getting them back up to that.
Yes.
We've even discussed, I know at our schools table, providing some more, um, family nights that are focused around like math and helping parents. If they have questions, because it is going to be a big shift and it's going to, you know, take everyone's support to help with that. So we want to make sure that the kids are supported at home by the parents. And so we're talking about how to provide some family nights for that too.
Well, and I think arriving at, you know, just the definitive answer for the kids, their whole way of arriving at that answer. While the answer may still be the same, the process of them getting there will not be different. I'm the first one to tell my kid, that's not how you do that. I need to be backing up what they're being taught at school. So if I have to come to learn how they're doing it, so I can say, no, no, this is how we do it. I want to empower parents to be an active participant in their child's math curriculum in, in our school. The, if they don't feel engaged or they, you know, no parent wants to feel like they don't know how to help their kid. So we need to be empowering them saying, hey, we're switching. This is going to look different. We need you to come in to learn it so you can then help your child. Just being completely transparent.
Absolutely for sure. Great. Um, and then still on the academic, um, with CMAS, I did want to share that on June eleventh. Um, if parents want to, they can go to the CDE parent portal and access their own students, uh, or child's scores. You can see their overall performance level and their scale score. You would just think there's student ID number, which you can get that from central office. So that is available now. We do not have our performance frameworks until early August to later in the month. Uh, we did reach out to ask. We thought, well, if we get the students' individual score, can we get our school? But, um, that's going to take a while longer. We, uh, Jean and I were able to see each individual student's scores. And just from what we've seen, it looks, it looks like very good scores. We're very excited to see, um, the difference from even last year to this year. So I'm very hopeful for, um, for us when we get that performance framework in, um, in August. So, um, just so parents know too, you can go on there and check out your student's scores. All right. For the school stages.
Just a second. So your body of. We were talking always about capturing as much data as we possibly can. With the shift of the older kids no longer taking NWA, does that skew what we were trying to accomplish by instituting that to begin with? Or does it not matter because we still have CMAS in place?
Is that Dibbles you mean?
They're just not taking Dibbles.
They're not going to do the Dibbles. No.
Yeah, that one.
We're going to continue NWA. It's just Dibbles we're not going to do and it shouldn't.
We're discontinuing it because the, the feedback we're getting from it's not really that helpful.
No, we're going to use it for, um, kids who maybe, um, have a, a replan, um, up till third grade. We still have some that are on and past third grade, but we're also going to try to utilize it to help with our leveling for our intervention groups and our small group supports. But we're just not going to, we don't feel like it's the best use of our teacher's time to do that where we can focus more on the things around NWA. So.
It's an early indicator for reading proficiency. So NWA is worse. At that level, they're reading to learn, not learning to read. Uh, it, Dibbles is more about learning to read and where they are in that process, if that makes sense.
It doesn't capture majority of the students that we should see at the intermediate levels. Um, what it will be beneficial for are those kids that we've identified as being struggling readers. Um, kind of as Claudia started saying, as we're looking at our intervention groups, um, and progress. Um kind of as Claudia started saying, as we're looking at our intervention groups, um and progress monitoring those students, still be utilized for that piece. It just the the net won't be cast across anymore, but we'd be using situations to say we have somebody new, a new student move in that we're concerned about reading scores. We would still put them through that progress monitoring phase, make sure it's good. Um any kids that, you know, will potentially pop up as a yellow or red. We're gonna continue to monitor, but those kids that are greens and blues that are ahead of where they need to be in or continue to make that progress. The data just wasn't wasn't needed for that piece. Um and so that's kind of what we're trying to get away from is some of the work that. Um we don't necessarily need to do um and focusing on just stuff that we do.
Thank you. Yeah, and the test itself, it takes it takes a lot of time and so we feel like we really need to focus on this tier one instruction this year. And for example, in sixth grade, Ms. Ortiz, she tests every single kid in that grade and that takes her like a whole week to do that out of instruction. And we just thought, really, for the data we're getting, we can get better data with the N W E A for that level. We need to use that kind of a little bit more wisely for our teachers. Anything else, Rowan? Um for the school state report, our enrollment stayed about the same, so we did have that dip in twenty twenty or twenty two, twenty three. Went up um the next year and it stayed about the same. We're at four hundred forty two for this last year. Our average daily attendance rate stayed in the nineties. We were, I was hoping it was gonna be a little bit higher, but I'm excited. It's still in the nineties. We're at ninety point fifty nine percent, um which is still above the state average, so we're excited about that. We did have a lot, I feel like this last semester, a lot of kids and staff out sick. Um we had a little bit of everything and it was just. Felt like we couldn't get caught up, you know, once we got past the phase of like the flu and then this, we, so I knew that our percentages weren't gonna be as high as last year. But um they're still up there. Our average class size stayed about the same and then our suspension totals, I was pretty excited about. We had sixty three last year, fifty eight the year before, and we're down, yeah, thirty eight this year, so they've gone down quite a bit. We're really, really excited about that. I feel like a lot of um factors have played into that C K H, I feel like is a big one. Um Haley's support with helping our students who maybe are missing a lot of school, how they can support them. Uh Mandy, our student advocate, helped her back quite a bit, so I do feel like, and like Julie said, you know, giving them some other outlets to help um. Them before getting to that that level of those out of school suspensions, if we notice some kids need some more need, have some more needs. Um so yeah, we're really excited about suspension totals coming down. Any questions on the safe school report? When did we start capturing Kingsburg? Um three, this is what we just finished our third year. Um capturing the parts. Yeah, and for those of you that don't know, Julie and school and my school both, uh we did get the national showcase award this year both, so we're really excited about that. Anything else?
Thank you.
Um so we'll start with the safe school report, starting with the enrollment this year. We have five hundred sixty seven. Enrollment, um it is broken down by the class size um per year. We had less than one percent out of dropout rate. Um zero expelled this year. Um we did have an increase in discipline with our beginning report. We did have um ninety five total suspensions and I believe there are over sixty of those that were unified along. And there were multiple that were um doubles with that. Um something that we're looking into for next year is we're creating a seventh grade hex by itself. So we'll have um all cores and one seventh grade hex. Instead of students reading that hex to go to a different class except for elected, they will stay within that hex and rotate. So they will go with all all of their cores within there. Um another thing that we're doing is within like the first. Um we're deciding on time limits, but first ten to twenty minutes with the instruction, so there's no um seventh grade at that time going to the restrooms. And then from that point forward, um because we have the hall pass system, there's only one kiddo out at a time, so then they can start going to the restroom after that. But before that time, we're not letting any kiddo out. Of course, there'll be some acceptance to that, we already know that, but the majority of it'll be staying in that. What we're doing is looking at the eighth grade, we do have an eighth grade hex as well. The only difference with the eighth grade though is within that hex, there is the kitchen that's off. On the other side of that, so the inside of the hex, you can't rotate all the way through. So we're looking at the cores are within that hex to seeing if we should do the same kind of thing with our eighth grade students as well. Um any question on that?
Is sixty suspensions camp from junior high alone? How does con- binding them all to the same hex help mitigate that problem?
So we're hoping that it um builds a lot more belonging, um togetherness, cohesiveness. So they're not out and about amongst all the rest, so that there's a lot of texting going on, um saying, I'm gonna get so and so here kind of thing. So if they're staying in the same hex or just rotating, so if it's just from this classroom to the next, they're going straight into that class. So then they're all contained together is the hope.
Also, uh we talked at uh D A C about the health and wellness class being uh re-implemented, is that? Are you guys looking at that?
So the health and wellness um would be, it it already somewhat is with our mindset class. So all seventh grade has the mindsets, so they would do, they're in a first semester and they would not have a second semester, so they would have a semester of it in seventh grade. And the eighth grade would be, we're hoping to get a career exploration class, so then that that teacher would do the health and wellness slash mindsets. And then eighth grade would be the career exploration. So then every student would be in those for the for the year, one on a semester.
The counseling center available to the junior high students?
Yes, I'm gonna have the outside coming here. So another thing that we um we're talking with T N T P when we went um a couple of weeks ago, there'd be um one of the three is belonging. So that's one of the things that really, you know, work on with our teaching learning cycle is making sure that that's built into there as well, the belonging, that kids know that they have a place to. Make them accepted and. Another thing that we do know though, um across the nation, it's one of the things I like doing is the research on it, so this is not. This is across the nation where there's um signal big in increase in discipline. Um we do know that it's coming after COVID, you know, our building is not done yet. The board gets a risk that is happening according to what they're resurfacing. It's they do not know how to use um their their words and their voice with their business. So we gotta start trying to implement some of those skills and strategies of learning to use their voice.
Do we know which, who might not, are these kids at the junior high, are they the same ones that. Are the suspension totals for the intermediate school? Cause I'm looking at, so twenty four, twenty three and twenty three, twenty two years, there is pretty high numbers of the intermediate school for discipline. For suspensions, and so then those years should be seventh and eighth graders now, which were then having high totals. Are they the same students, do we know?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know that. That would be.
I think that would be a continual problem that we just continue to spiral further and further into the.
Also, Jill, how far back did we get? Um so this report that you gave the suspension tracker, how far back did we go with that? Five years-ish. So if you did, if you didn't give me that information, I could, I could, I bet you that.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause there there's like three years in here at the intermediate school that are higher than all the other years. And then that would be about the same age for that junior high class right now, so I just thought it was interesting.
What another interesting too is if you look at last year's school, we only had thirty one suspensions. I mean, that's half of what we have the years prior. So it's, and that's even after COVID, so.
So then what in building climate has changed so substantially that children have acted out? A lot, ninety five is a lot. Even with counseling interference, I'm sure there were kids that were brought back from, you know, being able to act out much. Just like your two buildings, ninety five is a lot. You know, we did have students come and tell us that. They didn't wanna check in and out, that we should be focusing on behavior in the buildings instead of how long they're in the bathroom. And I think they don't see what we're trying to accomplish with that, but now we have students even calling attention to the problem. So what has changed so radically that that number has spiked?
So um a couple of punches that um the research says, and again, this isn't just here at Mahanta, this is across the nation. The kids cognitive lift, so it's harder um on them to do the curriculum, it's harder for them to do um the material. So that's where their frustration comes in a lot of it. Um we have heard too, um Claudia has shared that this too, that this X class coming up, sixth graders are even lower than this this year, seventh grade. So that's something else that we're gonna have to look at to try to fit those supports into place. Give our teachers some different skills and strategies on how to implement that. That's where T N T P is great, cause their 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 thing is they're not lost for hope and they said, don't. It's hard because we're right in the middle of it. Um I know Scott and Owen, um especially with this on this last year, it was brutal. What was the percentage at day, Scott? Or?
We had a suspension every one point four eight days. Something like that, so two suspensions every three days.
Um and I can tell you too, like junior high, um specifically, we've talked to veteran teachers that have been here. And have a junior high here, that's typical. That would have been a typical year for junior high. That's not typical for us, and we'll get our data. So we're we're looking at it. Another thing is we um we talked about a student advocate position. Um right now it's classified. We would like to move it to, uh yeah, it's classified and we'd like to move it to certified. So then that way we have the TOSA, it's not an admin position, it's a teacher on special assignments. Um we already have it budgeted, um so then that way that is a teacher who knows the ins and outs of the school. Of the knows the kids, knows teachers, they have that report um to build those relationships with kids. Because what we're wanting to do as well is we we've talked about them in I S S. The majority of when we look at the suspensions, though, the majority of this would have been an O S S. If we had an I S S in place, we would have to look at the structure and what that looks like, that that essentially could decrease that absolute suspension as well. We have talked with Rocky Ford, what they do with theirs, um a kid may go in for one day for an I S S. But most of the time, if they go in for any more than a day, they're staying there for two to three weeks because there's another program that they have to go in and do. So they have to complete this program of getting them to think about and use their words, plus they still have to do their work on top of that. But we need a dedicated person who has the skill set to bring that to provision for us. So that's one thing that we have asked for to help with that.
Is there data that shows that in-school suspension is. Better preventing future disciplines than out-of-school suspension?
And and I can't speak specifically to data, you know, off the top of my head, that says in-school suspension to out-of-school suspension. I'm just gonna speak to the amount of data that I've seen of out-of-school suspension leading to negative factors later in life. Uh I I yeah, I I just, I've seen a lot of data in that piece that um there's a lot of um correlation between kindergarten. Um data and graduation rates, and then there's a huge correlation between students that are suspended from school. Um there's a really interesting thing, it was called, I believe it's like the school and prison pipeline, I think it off the top of my head. But a ton of data just between um out-of-school suspensions and how that translates later. There's a lot of a lot of correlated data that. Um it's good for schools to look at and think about.
Are we going to be revisiting the cell phone then? If that's what's happening, they're texting each other, meet me here, whatever, whatever, you take away their phone, there's no. You only get to talk to people in your class.
That would be a a question that we um we have put every year, what what's gonna be back, what's not. Um if we if we come and skate a cell phone, what does that truly look like? Um I do know in the policy today, I believe that it's um being revamped, but the only thing that's really revamped in there is shall and will. A capital D versus a small d for district, so there's really no.
They had a watch and a smart technology.
Other than that, we would have to truly look at policy, because right now we are not really back that policy for what you're asking.
Even if we did put a policy in place. You're gonna have a really hard battle on your hands with students and with parents. And I can see both sides of it, but they need to realize that it's very difficult to have a classroom. Where five kids have earbuds in, six are on their phone, and then you have a dedicated number actually trying to get instruction.
So that's where we're hoping that if we got I S S, that could be one of those indicators to help curb that. Cause I totally believe that kids are gonna have their cell phone, we teach them through it and have that respect level of them going through it, teach them through it. Um and I think that's where I S S could help us with that as well. So if they are still using their phone, because we usually have parents who say, oh, my kid has their cell phone, if I text my kid, they're gonna text me back.
Well, I too can see that piece, cause I am also that parent, but. We're we're not just teaching kids, we're shaping adults. And we need to be cognizant of the fact that they should be able to live without that little device. Lots of people before them have done it, but we all did it at some point. We made it through life without that little personal device of ding 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 all the time. Um I think we really need to take a hard look. I really think the climate and condition of our building has a lot to do with. Attitudes and the, you know, kids don't wanna go to school in that environment. That's not gonna foster a, hey, I wanna be here attitude. And we really need as a district to take a long hard look at that entire building and what's happening there. What they go to school in and and we need to get on top of that yesterday.
Thank you.
Nobody wants to go to school, one, when there's no windows, we can't really fix that, but with everything coming down on top of you, we can try to control that.
We have a custodian who made a comment, um he's been there for twenty eight years. And they used to, even back then, until now, the buckets were a common thing, replacing the tiles were a common thing. They used to um uh tape up plastic. So if if this was a hallway, they would tape up plastic and then have it come down into a chute into a bucket. The buckets aren't big enough anymore for how much water is actually coming in, so it's it's, yes.
That's a very great suggestion, but we can do better. I don't know how yet. Jared's gonna find us some money. I don't know from where, but we're gonna do better.
And I guess, and thank you too, Jared, cause I know, I don't know that people really understand, um working with that best grant, trying. As much as you put into it, making it to the short round and then not getting it, kind of do that, but at the same time, knowing that it's a building we need. We do need to really put some time and effort into that, so I'm not sure if that's a committee, we need to get started. But talking to those who helped at the stadium and knowing that that's a different funding, um having Gray right here with us, I think we need to utilize as much as we can. And get that process going.
Yeah, great. We had a really good conversation at D A C. We really did. A lot of parents really would like to talk to you. Seriously, right, Jared?
There are.
They wanna start a committee.
You you know, it was a good conversation. I I think.
It was a great conversation.
Something that I keep kinda hearing is we're having this discussion back and forth, like I like that it feels more of a discussion is. This piece of a of a community need as well, you know, when it comes to cell phone piece. It can't be just an admin thing, it can't be just a work thing, and it can't just not involve the community piece either. Same thing as we talk about this best grant, I'm taking it off my list as we're having this conversation too, but it's. This piece that if we are looking at a different, you know, if we're looking at doing another building rather than just the roof. Looking at how we can start those initiatives to to get the community to to back the same thing and really do it all as one. Rather than kind of this divided field that it has appeared to look like before. Again, I I kinda have a skin view, but um something that, you know, I I don't think is impossible to look at. Um we just gotta kinda put some puzzle pieces together and see how we can maximize all of our resources.
I think a long-term awesome piece of it would be to get a new school, but that takes time. And where that building is located, that's gonna take a lot of effort and a lot of money. And that does not immediately improve the quality of life for our children currently in that building. And it's not gonna, probably for the group that's there now, seven through twelve, they're not gonna be able to reap those benefits. So as that might be the bigger picture, I think the next time it rains, we need to open that school and invite every willing community member to come through and walk through that hallway. Because unless they actually see what those kids are walking through on a daily, it's not gonna register. And we need to look at maybe passing a bond if we can't secure the best grant. I mean, we can keep trying, but we're just spinning our wheels. If we wanted it to rain, it would not. Now that we have these root problems, of course, it's rained a lot lately. And I think we need to, you know, we've been putting that capital reserves fund money, we talked about it earlier, aside for a very long time. This is the time to actually use that money. That's why we put it there and we need to put a pa- a plan in motion too. We've been talking about it for a long time.
Is that for the roof or for building?
I would say a roof qualifies as a building. It's it's it it's in dire need. I don't think if anybody walked through that little U hallway. And thought we didn't need to use that money for that, they should probably. I don't think if anybody walked through that little U hallway and thought we didn't need to use that money for that, they should probably walk it again.
So another thing, um, thank you for saying that. I appreciate that and acknowledging that as well. Um, another thing with that, with, um, talking with teachers, um, that we need our matrix. Um, we don't have one currently in place, but that's something that, um, Scott and Brenda are new A K. They're gonna be working on that as well. And we would hope that we did that student advocate in place, that that would help put that in place where kids knew, teachers knew, if they were on their cell phone next minute of time, they did, they just did I S S. So then that, it is, it is followed all the way through. Um, and do you know kids that when they're given an expectation, they will follow as long as they know? A lot of our kids are white kids, white. So when you show them the matrix, a lot of times they're gonna follow through with that just because they need to see what exactly they're gonna have. Go tell them, you know, show them. Um, something else with that too is, um, if we do get that as a certified position for a TOSA teacher on special assignment, that's something too where we're growing our own within our building. So then, um, looking at growing them into a, an assistant principal at some time so that they do know the process, they do know through that. So that would be something else to look at within that, um, round. Um, going through our daily, um, our average daily attendance, um, like the others who I've spoken with, um, Haley has been phenomenal. She's already created a, uh, if you don't know her, she's very on charts and spreadsheets and getting things ready. Um, she's got it already listed by month, an initiative for each throughout the district and for each building. Um, one of the things that we did at T N T P when we were working, um, uh, with the initiative that Haley had someplace, we would like to implement that into our strategic priorities. So then it's not just what students are doing, it's actually what teachers are doing as well. So then that goes hand in hand with the belonging piece on making, um, ten positive phone calls a month. Whatever the initiative is of what Haley is asking, or what we're all asking for that attendance initiative, then we're gonna be bringing teachers in on that as well, so that it's all of us working together to bring that, to bring that to fruition. So for us, um, looking at that this year, um, overall, seven, twelve, it was at eighty-eight point seven seven, um, in our daily average attendance. Um, we did not have any dropouts this year. Um, and as a matter of fact, we had one senior who had to come back in for credit recovery and they got everything done and completed. So that's a, a big thing. Um, and then no dropouts for our junior high either. And our graduation rate is staying at that, if last year was ninety-eight percent, so we're hoping this year that that even jumps up a little bit higher. And that's still one thing that we keep on as a, um, collective measure for our C O of B M S, so with our Randa, with our teachers, is that we wanna keep that graduation rate, um, at that ninety-five percent or higher. When I first started in the district, I think it was like eighty-two percent, something like that. So that's something to celebrate, that we've done that, because that is a lot about connections. Um, it's a lot about knowing our kids as well. Any questions?
No, they were even on why there's such a wide range from enrollment in seventh grade to twelfth grade. Why is there such a big drop between that?
Um, so that's part of that data that we shared last month about kids going online. It could be part of that. So this last year alone, um, from, uh, our building alone, I think it was fifty-four kiddos who went online. So not all of them were, were seniors, but going, um, through their nine, ten, eleven, twelve, especially that nine, or eleven, ten, eleven, twelve.
It looks like two on your count. Uh, the number that moved in Colorado to another school is forty-five. So you have that fluctuation, just people moving in general. So looking at that, it looks like you have forty-five that moved to others, no, others for Colorado and then two of them out of Colorado.
And like Julie was saying earlier, enrollment is down. Um, I know that we all take it personal, but again, that's across the nation. Um, there are other schools in the state that are closing because they thought their enrollment was dropped since.
Oh, just curious to, so you added twelve at the high school, fifteen at the junior high. You got any idea where that came from?
Um, I can get that information from, from other schools. I do know we do have some out of district as well.
Do we ever take a temperature of our student climate? You know, we're implementing these check-in systems because as adults, we're like, this is great. Nobody in, nobody out, we know exactly where you are. Do we ever send out any surveys to our students to gauge how they feel about these new policies we're implementing, something that could be anonymous? Where they can actually say what they really feel, what they think the climate of our school is? If they can make, you know, one thing happen overnight, what would it be? And then taking their feedback to build, build upon? I mean, they're the ones that live it.
Yeah, so we, we have, um, especially with the S cap data, um, we have done that. That's why some of the hallways are painted. Some of the passions, that was one of the big things a few years ago, um, was if kids said that it's dark and drabby. So that's where the, the painting of some of the walls came from. Um, other things were, um, ad. A lot of kids might add, who brought ad back in. So yes, not specifically a, a little things of what you're saying, but we could, um, if we wanted certain data, especially around the hall pass. Um, with T N T P though, there are three questions that we will be adding in, um, because of this belonging piece. That is something that our building, especially when we were doing our strategic priorities, that would be something that we will be asking more, more throughout the year on, and giving that information to our students. Could you write your voice counts?
Well, if they're, you know, filling out the survey at the beginning of the year and we have a high number of excitement and then the middle of the year, those numbers drop substantially, then, then something in your climate changed. You know, something happened with the kids that they're not as excited anymore. The hallways are dark and dreary and then it rains on your head as you're walking through it. That just makes you feel great. So those kinds of things we should be asking. Thank you.
You guys.
All right, Ken, last but never least.
Never least. Uh, okay, so I'll just bring down this thing real quick. My, uh, uh, our suspensions are down, uh, a little bit, thirty-seven from fifty-one. Uh, but that's a couple of reasons for that. One is my attendance is down, same reason I lost, uh, thirty-three kids or so. Um, but there are also, we've had to addition our suspensions for, uh, restoring discipline, restorative justice, and, oh, that means, that means we try, we, we have an I S S system at T T A that we utilize a lot. And, uh, we try to make the, uh, we want to, we want the kid back in class. We don't want the suspensions if we can help it. So it may be I S S, it may be some, for something that might be, uh, suspensions, maybe a timeout in my office. And then we run through what happened, we run through a remediation process, we get them back in class. And we're trying to really hard. It's a little easier for me because I've got a hundred students who are more like a family. So, I mean, it's a little easier for me to do that kinda thing. So our suspensions are down a little bit. Um, I think that's good. Uh, I had, did have two expulsions, but that was only for six weeks, for the last six weeks of the first semester. Um, my enrollment's at nineteen right now, is down to one forty-one. Uh, my daily attend, my, as you can see in mine, that's our daily attendance is, our daily attendance is at, I'm here every day, so it's a hundred percent. My attendance is a hundred percent. It's at seventy-two point seven, which is really good for an A E C. Um, if, if you look at the whole state and the A E C thing, the, the, the attendance is down everywhere. That's the main goal that, for an alternative campus, that truly pushes attendance. So ours is pretty good at seventy-two percent. I think that's a good deal. And it is good for an A E C. Uh, we did have one dropout. That wasn't really a dropout. That was age out. She, she turned over twenty-one. So it wasn't really a drop. That was our, shouldn't say age out, but that was the fall. And then of course, like I said, we, thirty-three kids moved to another district, three moved out of Colorado. And we had thirty-two, that's thirty-two that didn't start with us, but in, they were with us. Some of those are going back and forth between my building and Jansville.
You said thirty-three were out of district or thirty-three went to.
Thirty-three moved to a school in Colorado.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and I know most of those were, most of those kids moved to online school, or their parents, but most of those were moved to online. There's, I still see them every day. And then the, the, the thirty-two is kind of, the thirty-two, I think is Jen got some, she gave me some. So that's kinda how that works. And that's really, yeah, I mean, I, uh, I did, I did look at our S A T stuff and did have some growth in our S A T stuff, but the participation rate in that was very near where I'd like it to be. Um, kids still believe they can opt out because they can. And it only takes one, then everybody thinks they can, say, oh, Dr. Shub. So, but, uh, I, even if it wasn't the, I, I like them to take, I like all the kids to take all the tests, but I really would like all my kids to take the S A T, but didn't have a lot of suspicion.
Do you offer like some type of reward for them to, by taking the S A T?
You can't, you.
Yeah, can't. Certainly we can't reward them.
I wish we could. I wish we could.
They used to give money. They give so much money for whatever sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah, they used to give bikes and tons of things.
Yeah.
And you can't incentivize them or punish them.
Cannot reward more penalties for taking them up.
Interesting.
With the one that ages out, do you, um, do you give them information on how to get a G E D or anything like that?
Yeah, push the board, gosh. I think he's still waiting to have, but.
Yeah.
Pushing to wait for him to have the link. Which is very good. But, yeah, getting questions?
Do we have an actual report from Ken?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I will remember what you said.
I'll give it to you, Jerker. I'm sorry. Yeah, great. Any questions? Yeah. Yeah, bring it up.
Any other questions for our building principals?
I just wanted to thank you guys a lot, especially with the math. I know it's hard and I know it's getting hard on the teachers too and all the training. And thank you, Jared. You know, you're the, that's the whole reason why we got you here, is to help us with this.
All right, it, it definitely is nice not feeling wrong, but I have a great, a great team of admin. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about support, some of the, the people that are diving into it, um, that makes me feel very hopeful for it. So I appreciate you acknowledging that, but it, it feels good.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, that was heavy. Items. Mr. Romero, operations update. As a friendly reminder, please make up our doubt.
Okay, uh, contractors, please, all ten downloads are completed here in lots of days. So if they haven't got any contract filled, they're coming right now. Uh, we're still doing interviews and hiring, ongoing in the various buildings. Those are still out there. As we still have some spots open. Uh, one thing I wanted to bring or talk to you guys about, Jared and I talked about the business manager slot. So far, we've had one internal, internal applicant. Uh, something that I feel heavily on is that maybe this position should be hired by the new superintendent. Uh, we're kind of in a good spot right now with Advocates as far as them taking over and the other stuff at this, at this point, so we're in good habit of down. Um, but I really expected to see a lot more applicants for that spot. And I don't know if it's maybe, we need to look at the salary for that, that position. That, that might be why we're not attracting anybody. I don't know. Um, but again, that's somebody that's gonna be working closely with the new person. And I just feel that that person should be the one to hire that position since it's kinda gonna be number two, number three, spot-ish type deal if he will.
If I can hop into you, as I, as we've kinda puzzled this back and forth, the number of people applying to, talked about the sc- salary, the salary side of things. But the other piece is kinda the, I don't wanna call it the rumor mill, but, but kinda where we've been at financially with the audits and everything else that as we, you know, brought on Advocates, and I will say that Mr. Romero's done a great job of really utilizing them to any little bit within their contract that we can use them for, uh, he tries to navigate and, and I think they've done some of this, getting us to where we need to be. And I think part of that piece is we have a little bit more time, we bring in another leader, uh, hoping that playing some out of getting ahead of our office might keep, I, I feel like, I guess what I'm trying to say is feel like there might be some people that are detouring away from it just because they feel like it's, um, not as sound as it should be. And they don't wanna jump into something that they're gonna have a work in progress. As to where I do think that we're on the verge of getting a lot of our office stuff done, getting a lot of that stuff cleaned up to where it's gonna be a little system to step into. And I do foresee that in the future being easier to hire than it is. Just add that piece.
So let me just ponder on that. Uh, next what I got is, um, as I told you last, we did get an additional hundred ninety-six thousand from the school security disbursement grant. Uh, they had some leftover fund, we reapplied it and we were awarded that. So we'll be utilizing those for, uh, interior access control at the primary school. Uh, the remaining project from the previous three hundred and three thousand will be completed starting this weekend. So that all should be completed by this weekend. I did apply for an additional hundred thousand for the S S D grant, again, for fiscal year twenty-six. This year, for some reason, they capped at a hundred thousand, um, but I applied for it and we should know by July seventh whether we got that, so I'll update you on the next meeting whether we got that or not. Um, fire alarm system inspections on those will commence tomorrow, starting here at this building. And the other buildings, I can't get them scheduled to facilitate, but August fourth, sixth, and seventh, I avoided the fifth because of registration. So we'll get those completed. Uh, one big thing that we're doing this year with our mandatory training, um, we are actually gonna purchase the entire library this year. So they'll still be required to do the mandatory training, but there's also other trainings that they are more than welcome to take, that they could utilize towards their P Ds and whatnot. So it'll be anywhere from some classes that they can take on autism to our maintenance guys can find some classes on HVAC and fire alarm systems and various things. So we will have access to everything that they have in the vector K D ball system, which is aligned with our SIP stuff. So that was one thing that we've had to hear from a lot of staff members, is there are other trainings that we can take. And so with this, doing this, they will be able to use that to their heart's content. That is all I got. Any questions for me?
I assume that we share that information far and wide, hey, here's all this extra information at your fingertips if you so choose to utilize that.
So I will go live with that training on, uh, July one. We usually give them all a month to go ahead and complete that. Uh, but also I'm gonna draft a district by the email advising what I just told you so that they, they can just go into that system and search class A, whatever. If it's there, they're free to take it.
Do we send one email at the beginning of the year and that's it? Or do we send something out quarterly, just reminding them that that resource is there? Shall they?
I send out an email at the beginning saying, look, that it's available to them. I have a system to generate an automatic email every two weeks until they complete the mandatory one. And once they're completed, then those emails stop. So I have that built in there to remind them. We do have a deadline that they're supposed to be completed by the first day of school. So they do have a full month to complete all the required modules, which I think is less than four hours total. So they do have a month to complete though, but as they're approaching every two weeks, they're getting a notification saying, uh, you haven't completed X, Y, and Z, so we get, get those reminders.
For mandatory?
For mandatory, yes.
Yes. Do the students get? I, I got an email on there that there were some like baby and, um, other things, or do we have access to all of that too?
No, those are actually added additional costs for that library. So we can look at that down the road to have those for the students, but right now this is just the staff library. And so then that usually, baby, those is, you know, so many seats, you know, one to forty-nine and fifty, you know, like the babies. And so I did see that email too, that reminded something where we look at, you know, we pay for so many seats, are they just evolving or is it one per signup or how that works? So we do have to look at that to see, careful. Yeah.
How much do we pay advocate a month to fill that business man position? How much do we pay Abacus a month to fill that business manager position?
Contract that was signed on five twenty-one, six thousand dollars.
Any questions for Reggie?
Uh, yeah, I have two. Um, any update on the Twenty-second Street situation?
I haven't heard a word. Um. I do notice that they are doing somewhat of a cleanup over there at Cat Fire, and then I knows that. Um, but I haven't heard any updates in.
And then, um, any thing on the fixing the cooler at the primary school?
I believe that is fixed. Um, they had an issue where they thought the system sprung a leak. Turned out it was Luke's tool that actually sprung the leak. Not the system, so once he discovered that his tool, the one that was doing the leaking, he replaced that and we're all good to go. So as far as I know, that freezer is up and running.
All right, question going back to the business manager position. Would it make more sense to continue with Abacus if we don't have? Good quality applicants for the position?
I think so. I mean, they're, they, they, they're picking up where we left off, but they're. More than willing and able to do what we need them to do.
Cause they seem to know, they, they pretty well know first in what they're doing. And we're paying them about seventy-two thousand a year. And our business manager with no experience is sixty-five?
Sixty-six, it starts with very five.
So without no experience, so if we're paying someone with ample experience, basically that wouldn't make more sense? To go that route instead of hiring a business manager?
Possibly, because they also have cost savings of benefits, they're not paid now, things like that. And I mean, I, these folks are our business managers for a lot of districts.
Right.
And so they, I can tell you, they spent the whole Memorial Day weekend. Just getting rid of redundant line items, big wrong numbers that they have, there was just, there was so many repetitive, they cleared all those out, got the report down for. I don't know, sixty-some pages down to ten pages or something, I'm just exaggerating, but they took a lot out. And so they actually went there and cleaned up a bunch of stuff in SDS. More importantly, Kim, who was on there today, she was a part of SDS for it was. That she created it or was on board when they created SDS, so she knows SDS like the back of her hand. And so I think that's where we were kind of lacking in the business department, was we had this. Cadillac that we just didn't know how to drive. It reminded me a lot of the scoreboard program up at the high school. We had it placed for ten years and then we knew how to run it, and then at the beginning of there, take one back, it's like, oh, I didn't know we could do that. And so having them would be beneficial to train our current staff and even future staff on what SDS can do. Cause I think we, we had limited knowledge on what its capabilities were. And so they are a rapid pressure, they are very knowledgeable and I think they are worth the spend right now. And so whether it's for the foreseeable future, or we put this off till August first, when the new person gets seated, or we just say, hey, let's try this for a year. And see what we come up with and then determine, you know, that could be the superintendent's decision, maybe we don't fill that spot and we just contract with them.
Well, even if we, if we said that stay with them for a year, maybe by then we will instill some security that we have secure financials and. Nobody wants to walk into a big mess like that.
No, I wouldn't. I'm, I've learned a lot in two weeks and it's not very much.
Is there anything that Abacus does not fulfill that our previous business manager did?
So.
She buried her test?
No, sorry, I don't, I just say yes and no, for the most part, Abacus can really do everything. Um, there's a little bit of boots on the groundwork as far as coming from like bookkeepers to central office to out. Um, what I try to do is try to meet with a couple of different districts and try to figure out which ones are actually. Using Abacus in this, in this way and see how they do it. From the sounds of it, what seems like a pretty effective system is that they have an individual. That's paid a stipend that essentially is kind of like the go-to person for financials to Abacus. So like any of the logistics, those cash receipts, any of that piece, they're uploading all that documentation and sending it. Um, but it sounds like it wasn't like a, that was the only, uh, that individuals, that was their only job. But it was like a stipend that was paid to that individual that as they're collecting all that information and sending it out. Abacus is really doing the meat and potatoes and things, they were just kind of pushing, putting those pieces together for them. Uh, so that they have that information. And so I kind of looked at that piece as we were starting to decide, you know, yes, it looks like we pay. Almost comparable to what the salary would be, um, minus all the para, everything, all those other pieces. But then, um, would we logistically have to look at a stipend or whoever would be doing some of that labor? We would, um, unless, you know, we found a game that, that the superintendent would take that on, or you know, whoever would take that piece. Uh, whether we assign that or we look at it as a stipend piece, I'm not sure, but I, I do think that there's a little bit of that caveat that we would need to look at. Just in the tracking of these, the filing of these, making sure everything is scored and it's sent to Abacus. Um, on a routine basis, I think is the biggest piece.
Did Heather have a secretary?
Uh, I don't believe so, no.
She did have somebody that was helping her though, it was.
Yes, and as right now Shay is, is picking up the weight, uh, for doing some of those, those pieces that we're talking about. Um, one thing to that, because that, you know, as we're looking at all the resources, they have a lot of insight too on, uh. Trying to make out as far as paying like our supplemental insurances and kind of overseeing. Every financial aspect of what the district is doing, they can provide services to, which is, I think we could benefit a lot from that.
They're very savvy, very well aware of. It's all the app stuff, the title funds, the everything, they're well versed on what they know we need that. And same, so as far as any resolutions that children need, they are all well aware of what is needed for districts, because they work with a lot of districts.
Okay, any other questions for Reggie? All right, get a mute card.
Thanks. Um, I guess I'll kind of switch here just a little bit, to about order in my mind, I'll, I'll start off with the best grant. Um, I know we've had different things that, different work sessions, things like that, but just to make sure everyone's on the same page, that we didn't receive the best grant. Um, I, I got some of those final proceedings, I think we came in, it was like. I can't remember off the top of my head, but we weren't there. Um, I'm learning a lot about the process of, of. How we score as far as our application goes and things like that. I'm getting more information for CDE. Um, from that piece, uh, but again, something that we talked about that. In, in not getting that best grant, trying to budget out the normally, uh, amount of money so that we can at least start to patch some of those hotspots. Until we come together, if it's, everyone wants to put that initiative piece to really look at spending, uh. That money on an entire roof for what we want to do, uh, we have this short, short, short-term plan, uh, in place to try to see what we can do to. To start facing things now as we start to put together those pieces. Did anyone have a question with, with that piece just before I move to my next section?
How far scoring wise did we miss out on getting it?
Um, I can look, I, I, I apologize, I don't remember right off the top of my head. I know CDE has it posted on their website, I want to say we were in the. Like twenty-seventh place, basically, they, they were left at top twelve. And that's where we were at, um, in discussing with districts around us. Uh, there were a couple that were very close, I, I want to say it was just outside, I think they were twelfth possibly, um. But we, we were somewhere around those lines and I'll look, I can look as we get done it, but I can run the topic, but. Yes, and, and having broke down their system and ruling, um, I have a meeting set up with CDE so that I can meet with that individual that can. Go score by score with me to tell me exactly where we lacked in what, what specific area, rather than just our final rating, if that makes sense. Um, and I can definitely put something together for you guys if you would like that as well, that kind of outlines how we did on that piece.
I'd like to see maybe some possible ways we can get creative to try to tackle our problem, whether it be. Passing a bomb, standalone thing that we tap into our stadium to try to get that done. I, I want everyone to hear and feel my urgency, we're in summer and it's raining a lot. And if we get a really wet winter, we are in deep trouble at that building. It's, it's only going to continue to get worse and. I, I keep saying it's bad, but if you want to see it, contact one of the, the people at the high school, it really is as bad as I say it is. Um, we need to do better and not only do we all know it, we need to start acting on it. Because it takes time to put those watch scale plans into action and we need to be doing it already. Um, we, we really need to just get on it, it's only gonna get worse. And I would hate to see, you know, something happen where we can't occupy the building and then we're really in trouble or. You know, part of it comes down and we, let's not let it get that far down the road, let's. We can toss money on Band-Aids, but essentially that's a waste of money. Because they're just Band-Aids, you fix one area and then the water travels and now you have it worked somewhere else. Um, I want to go get the plans that we can look at and, and get going on Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. And lay it out for the general public, see.
Uh, I, I agree with you and I think part of this piece, um, I would feel. Very, I, I would feel more comfortable had all our audits done, have all of this stuff taken place. Already to be able to, to make that decision. I'm with you on that, I see the need for that. But it's hard to make that decision feeling like I'm behind on that side of things. So I feel like we gotta wait for that ball to catch up before we can swing at it.
How much longer do we think that'll be upcoming?
Last time, um, last timeline, I've heard it's been a, it's been a few weeks since I heard this, but. My understanding was they were hoping that we would come December, be caught up on everything to day and be. Day to day with budget, audits, everything. Their goal was to have everything done by December next school year.
I think come December, we're gonna have our hands full with problems. That we're too far into the winter season, we're not gonna be able to do anything, but try to exist in the building. We should take advantage of some of the warmer weather we have. Get some experts on the room to see really what we can do. I mean, we can start the ball rolling without committing to anything, but we, we need to see action. I don't want to wait until December before we're like, okay, everything's caught up now, let's talk about it. Because we are gonna have kids in that building in August. And they're not responsible for, you know, the financial mess that we had for a little while. That's not the them problem, that's us problem.
You said there was a kind of place for fixing like the hotspots.
That's that, that's that sixty thousand dollars that was budgeted, um, for roof repairs, so that each month they were putting in, um. About five thousand dollars worth of work. Um, and again, we, we did that intentionally so that it was spread out in case we decide, hey, we want to do this bigger piece. Uh, maybe that's something that we need to revisit and say, hey, do we want to scale and front load? Thirty thousand of it for this, for the school year as early as possible, go that route, maybe that's something that we want to look at as well.
And we couldn't utilize any of that grant money because it would jeopardize our chances of securing a best grant. But we didn't get the best grant, so we still can't utilize the grant money because we're gonna try to reapply, see what they do to us.
It makes it, it makes it, it makes it very, uh, very tricky. It does, it makes it very tricky.
That was kind of a. Bitter sweet bill to where yes, we got the money, we could use it for something else, but it was. How sad that we couldn't use it for the roof because the kids are the one that put that information in CDE's. It's that, they called us and hey, your kid did a, a survey, said your roof is jacked up, we can build this money actually, and we said, cool. SDS says, yeah, you're good with that, Derek checked for best, and they said, uh. If you get the hundred and twenty to fix that roof, only to tear it off, that's gonna negate you for the best grants, so like.
If we're twenty-seven, we're not close. I mean, it feels close if they have a hundred and fifty, but if they only take twelve, we're not close. We, we need to do something. And maybe we, we put that best grant thought out of our head and we, we just get it done. That money might not even be there moving forward. I would really hate to put all of our eggs in that one basket. Do you have anything else to share with us, Jared?
Uh, I do, move it to my next session, yes, move it to my next session. Um, something that, that I was, I was really excited about it as we talked, kind of the different summer programming and what we were looking at this year. Um, you know, I, I, I know for things like Tiger Tots, um, I worked on some other grant work to make sure that we got that paid for. Um, some of the initiatives that we talked about for the family, community, relationship side of things as far as attendance and initiatives, things like that. Um, I was able to work with this grant to also provide funding for individuals like Haley, as well as our student advocates. Um, to one, to, to, to create resources for families to use, but also, um. To pay the individuals who were doing the extra work and doing the extra time in the summertime to get some of those initiatives done. So I was really excited with that piece, but as, as this summer programming inside kind of shifted, we did a couple. We did a week, um, full of trainings that was just focused on math and ELA, um, at the primary school. Um, the, the turnout was phenomenal, um, it was great, our instructional coaches really carried the cognitive. Load of that, of that training, they were up, they were teaching the entire time, our, our teachers did phenomenal. Um, and it was in a time after school when everyone's tired and they'd rather be at home. Um, and they came in and they put in a ton of work, um, and I could have been happier with the outcome. Yeah, I felt like it was something new when I asked a lot of the staff members, you know, I know they did a survey and got great results, but just. Whether that was something, it, it seemed like there was something new for RISOTRA that they had. Their own people kind of leading the, the way, rather than just bringing someone from the outside in. Um, and so that was, that was really neat to see that piece of it, um, I felt like we made a lot of work. As we did some work with, um, TNTP and Mrs. Miller actually did a great job talking about the lesson internalization. Um, and how we planned for that, I really, I truly feel like the teachers that came to this, um, professional development, this work week. Is gonna be light years ahead of the ones who didn't. Um, just in the sense that they've already kind of gotten the logistics down of, of how they're gonna try to plan out. How much condensing they have to do with the curriculum, one thing with us being on a four-day school week. Most curric- most curriculums are ready for a five-day school week, so how are we gonna condense that piece? How are we gonna utilize and make sure that we're doing the most impactful lessons at a time? And that's kind of what we started to look at as a staff. Um, and I, where I really think that they'll be ahead of everybody else just from being there. Um, and I say everybody else, but I wish I had a minute for me, but the turnout was tremendous. I want to say we were at thirty-eight teachers that were there, um. I, I mean, primary admin, everyone was there, it was phenomenal. Um, now we're gonna carry on into our TNTP work. Um, TNTP was really awesome, that was our first week when we were there, we had almost every single administrator there, um, including, uh. Brenda, who's gonna be a new hire, wasn't even on contract yet, but wanting to be out there and, uh, be a part of the change and the initiative, and so that was huge. One huge feedback that they shared with me, uh, from every other district that attended TNTP. Was how much they had wished that their administration was there and it wasn't just like. You know, I spoke to, to, to one lady, then she's an entire district, it was just her by herself at this entire conference or this entire training, um. And just a piece in the benefit that it was having everybody there, so that we could collaborate, we could get on the same page and we could. Start working towards some of those initiatives. Um, you, you heard a lot whenever we were working with UVA where we have these ninety-day plans. Um, I want to throw something your guys' way, is TNTP doesn't call it that, they, you know, the. Specific terminology I can remember off the top of my head, but it's something along an archway, essentially what they call it. And you have these different arches and they kind of program it out to where. Our principals and our admin right now are really focusing on the first archway, the first, they call it a strong start, how can we be as successful as we can? Um, in the first, uh, few days of school and how we're gonna monitor it, how we're gonna collect data on that piece. Um, myself is, is, is looking at it from a district lens, it's looking at making sure all those archways align. And then how we can align those archways for a year's worth of work. Um, and with looking at that piece, uh, I think it's great that we're kind of putting these plans together, but where. I think the district can really get impactful is how we follow up with that, how we're collecting data on making or meeting those initiatives. And how we can communicate that with people. Uh, when, when SCAP was here this last time, that was one feedback piece we got, was that. Our teachers felt like they see our principals doing a lot, they know they're working hard, they're doing all these things. Sometimes we might struggle to communicate all the things that we're doing. Sometimes we might struggle to communicate all the things that we're doing and celebrate that piece and share, share with everyone and get on that same page. And so I met with a couple of other district leaders to see how they were unrolling, um, a couple of ideas that I'd really like to kind of. Start now with you guys, just as, as looking at, you know, when we come back to school, one of our, one of our days with staff without students look like as we start to plan that piece. But really start to involve the board in, um, they said that what they utilized a lot was work sessions that were focused on data. Um, and so implementing a system with the board where it's not just talking data in WEA or, um, CMAS or anything like that. It's also looking at these, um, pathways and seeing like what progression, what progression we've made as a district as well as each building. Um, and kind of keeping you guys up to date on what those initiatives are, um, and keeping them at really the forefront and the efforts of what, um, we're trying to accomplish. Um, one thing I really like with TNTP is, and I think I mentioned this, technically they're under contract for just intermediate. Um, they they really don't, their support really stops there. What they've agreed to is they've acknowledged that in order for intermediate to be successful, primary has gotta be setting that footing ahead of them. So they've worked with that. Um, I've had some wonderful conversations with Sarah Lynch as well as Josh Smith, um. From TNTP about the fact that it, to me in my mind, when I'm looking at it from this district lens, it makes no sense to do all this work at primary intermediate. And not be having these conversations with junior, senior, high or TTA. And how we can kind of just start to develop these systems that are gonna offer success. Um, and include the entire district in that piece. And so that's something I wanna look at. As I've met with them and worked with them and how we can kind of develop part of that schedule to have some of those conversations that whether that needs to be, um, additional. Like I said, work sessions where we're able to have those conversations, or maybe we just add that as as full agenda pieces or whatever that may look like. That's just something as I've met with some of these leaders that they said, hey, this is a great way to help solidify the work that you guys are trying to do. Capture it and then really reflect on the practices that are actually moving the district. Uh, so that we're doing it in the building, but we're also doing it with the community and the school for this pop. Um, I really like that piece, uh, as I transition over to UVA. So UVA we have coming up, we leave July thirteenth. Um, believe it is that week before we had set for, um, some of the superintendent stuff, but we would come back, I believe. And and that that would just be principals and myself, we will leave on the thirteenth and then we return that Thursday. Um, prior, so we'll be out that Sunday through 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 the, um, first day. Um, my next piece is a consolidated app. Um, I know Richie kind of turned this as well. Um, as we're looking at that, this is kind of this application that outlines all of our title funding. Um, right now, not all of that piece has been released. From my understanding, the window of. When it's gonna be released to the window that it's due, um, is very tight. I know that they were talking about having this due on the thirtieth. Um, logistically, I'm not sure how it's even gonna be possible to to release that piece and turn around and have it uploaded. Um, I've reached out with CDE and we have a a grant writer that's tremendous. She's helped me with everything since I've been in East Otero. She's gonna help us get set up as a district so that we have everything almost copy and paste, ready to go, so that as soon as we get that information and can have that submitted. We can send an update, we can get everything submitted to CDE so that it's taken care of. Uh, and then my, my last piece is, uh, the curriculum that we were talking about, um. As is the different frustrations and pieces I have just getting it here. It is here. Um, I want to, I want to give my recognition to Mr. Kristen Mile, um, for taking that in, um, getting it inside and make sure that it wasn't damaged. The one day that it rains in Lahana in a month is the day it's showing up. And I'm in meetings and I can't, I can't give the guy a hand. He did a tremendous job. We get it out of the weather. It's starting to get that process sorted. Um, it's, I know it sounds like a tiny detail, but even getting that stuff sorted and making sure it goes to the right buildings, um. Saves a lot of frustration and headache for everybody. And and I wanna say that he's done a tremendous job of taking that piece on. Um, and helping us get that stuff squared away. It's, it's, he, he, it is working out for him. Um, and so I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that as well with him, but I'm really excited to actually have it. In person, um, and and be able to put our hand on it. And so we're gonna be dis- dispersing that. Um, to all the buildings that kind of get in that squared away. I'm just trying to to time that so that we're not putting it right in the middle of custodials, um. Classrooms and things like that as they're trying to clean it. I'm trying to make sure that it kind of follows, follows suit as soon as they get rooms cleaned, we can get that uploaded and taken care of. Um, yeah, other than that, we're gonna wait for test scores to see where we're at. Um, I'm feeling, I'm feeling confident. I felt like we were more intentional, especially the second half of a school, which is our practices and what we're doing. Um, you know, I think it plays a role in a lot of things. As you look at the bigger picture for even disciplinary things like that, as we heard a lot of discussion about what we can do. I think that there's a huge piece of having students engaged in in the academics that will. Deter some of the behavioral stuff. I don't think it'll do all of it, but it's kind of that same, you know, that same idle hands, you know, leaves in trouble. It's kind of that same piece of. If we can keep people engaged in the lesson and engage in the content, um, I think it'll help us on the other side of behavioral pieces as well. I think less downtime, more active time, it's a higher level of meat, um, for high level, positive thinking, more of us. I think beyond that, um. I think we're good. I know there was one thing that was mentioned, but just that piece for Willow Tree with that mental health stuff for our students. Um, I have heard that advocated. I have looked at that. I know we talked at DAC about the different health and wellness classes, um. Where we're trying to look at it from a financial standpoint is the huge ticket that that comes with and how we can financially justify it. Um, and how we can try to find a way to use a grant system of some sort to help offset that piece. Um, it sounds like it's great for our kids. It sounds like it's something that we've, we've seen some gains from, just trying to figure out how we can. Pay for everything, do everything and put money in that capital reserve too. It's kind of where we're starting. Uh, and then other than that, I don't have anything else specific.
Any questions for Jared? On the Willow Tree, wasn't it this year we paid for that instead of using grant money? Wasn't the grant money done the year prior?
I don't know for sure. I would have to go back and look and see how much we allocated out of budget for that. I do think there were some conversations with that. I do know that there were some, also some conversations with, um. How, how people were being billed for that. I know like there was some, some schools that I guess use Medicaid, things of that nature, and I think. Mr. Merrill might have since she was there.
Uh, that's a fun review and then also we were allotted the last two years. Um, for the SHB, the school professional grant through Rosie, they're allotted, um. A little over seventy thousand that went towards it, but we're talking half a million for. For us kind of crazy, I I didn't post that, but it's a lot of money. For those outside of campus, so we're kind of looking at different, um, avenues, different agencies, billing Medicaid, billing insurances. Um, but looking at. A pot of money potentially that could, um, support our kids that don't have insurance, that were, uh. Because they use the phone, you know, where you can. Stay in a home without parent permission. And so, um, that's a, for a lot of regular basic, those kids who meet those requirements. Plus how the time that coming will give those through insurance, things like that. So there's a lot of differences that we've talked about. We had a really great conversation, I got. Want to, they allow to be, they allow those out in counseling, um, how much is benefited our students, but that that cost that's associated to it, um. And the, the lack of providers that are ready to to contract with as well. I think that's a big, um, hurdle that we have to go over. Or to, um, all of this alliance.
Am I relying that that school health professional grant that's ending? Is that right?
Yeah, this, um, upcoming school year is probably our last, uh, year. Rosie's will read by for it, or as many times as they can, um, and they will try to, uh, allocate as much money throughout the, if something is possible. Um, we don't, we don't know what that number is until September, November, uh, September, October time when we get our budget sheet, um. But until then, we, the last two years will be a little bit less sunny each year, um, of that allocation. So it could be less, uh, this last, this third year. I'll leave it, uh, of that track.
Do you have any questions? All right, moving on to unfinished business. Approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six final legend and appropriation resolution.
We need to vote on resolution.
Uh, just both as a package, budget and the, and the resolution.
I make a motion to approve twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six final budget and appropriation resolution. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six final budget and appropriation resolution.
Questions or comments?
I just wanna thank you guys. I had my rope out so we get to this point and we're docking it like this. So, um, I appreciate all your, all your effort. Thank you, thanks.
You got the short window of that.
But it, it really is a team, uh, a, a team piece. I mean, there's. Like I said, Shay's playing a role in this, Advocates playing a role in this. I I really gotta give it up to Mr. Romero for playing a, a pretty good role too. Um, as much as I love to have been in this with TNTP and some of the other stuff, it pulled me, um, honestly, Sarah did a great job, or I'm sorry, Ken did a great job. Before we decide going, hey, here's where you missed this conversation. Here's this catching the up with pieces, but really the, the team did a great job with that, um. Yeah, I, I was very excited to see it as well. It seems like a great step, what we're doing, um, they handled it well.
Like I said, with the, the capital stuff. Zadder, balanced budget and knowing we can address down the road, it was like, we had heard that quite some time, so. Pretty exciting to hear that from them, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
All right, new business, item A.
Um, we have to approve revised policies JF, GB, GD. JICJ. IJKEC, ACA, JICA, JLCD. JLDAC and KFA. I'm the first for revising.
So. Most of these policies were revised, uh, just. Grammar changes through CASB, um, there weren't any really big changes. Policy JF, we made some clarifications on items. Need, that need to be presented to prove residency in the district. And then policy GBGB, uh, has been revised. To reflect a list of new workout providers.
All right. Hold on. I have a motion and a second to approve the aforementioned policies on the first revised reading. Questions or comments?
Is policy KC? There's a lot of red on there. So is that all new?
And that one, um, policy KEC. In two thousand fourteen, for. Some reason, policy wasn't being done correctly and and some. Some policies were missed. This is one of those that that were. Never got updated when a revision come out in two thousand fourteen, so. So we have a little bit of catch up. There's a little bit of catch up in some policies, yes.
And I have heard just along, along, like the content in libraries. I have heard a lot of discussion, um, especially in the front range about what content is being even when you look at like scholastic or fairs and things like that. There's a lot of. I don't wanna say controversy, but a lot of discussion between districts and parents about what kind of content is even being brought into that. I think that it's kind of. It's a great way to look at this piece. It it's just becoming a bigger, it's playing a bigger role in some of the conversations that I see.
Anything else? On the cell phone policy, is that something we can? Pass today on reading and then just put on where, when the new superintendent comes in, we can relook at it? And maybe adopt it.
Yeah, you guys, um, this is just a first reading, so it is changes you as a board want to make. You can, um, revise and then second reading will be next month or later in tomorrow.
Can we do the first and the second and then later in the year? Cause it sounds like from the staff, they're wanting something more. Important, yes, than just kind of a fluffy general policy.
And there's a lot, right? And when we look at that piece, I I even thought about when Jen was giving that specific example of, of the. The logistical side when a teacher confiscates a phone, where that phone goes and the, you know, the event that a kid has a broken screen. And then could turn around and say, oh, I didn't have a broken screen before I gave it to the teacher. Things like that that. Just really gotta look step by step through to see what that process looks like. So you can outline it is is, it makes sense for sure.
Well, I think there's a lot of pieces to putting a policy like that, getting. The, the community, the stakeholders, all that, all. Not something just do in the.
And look at other districts and see what they've implemented and see how it works. Also look at the data and see if their supports came up and all that good stuff with the district. Which it has, I've seen them. Eagles on one that I, like, they've done some really good things. And they don't necessarily take the phones away from the kids. They hang them on the back of the door.
Right, and I think that's kind of where we're gonna come from is that it's, you know. I I have my personal thoughts on this, but that's not what I'm bringing to this table as a CAO. I'm trying to bring a decision that's based off of data. It shows it's gonna be better for our kids, not what Jared Wilson says, what the data is saying is best for kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's huge.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Oh, sorry.
Aye, aye, for the both of us.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mrs. Mr. Coleman, aye.
All right, item B, approve revised regulation JLCD dash R on first revised final reading.
Uh, this is a regulation, so it's first revised by, it only has the reading.
Make a motion to approve revised regulation JLCB dash R on first revised and final reading.
Have a motion in a couple of seconds to approve. Um, provide a regulation JLCB dash R on first revised and final reading. Any questions or comments? For those in the audience who are discussing administering medications to students. Hearing none, discussion, roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
All right, item C, approve revised policy CBA slash CBC on second and final reading.
Make a motion to approve revised policy CBA CBC on second and final.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve revised policy CBA slash CBC on second final reading. Any questions or comments?
Roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Aye.
All right, item D. Approve an interim committee stipend.
Make a motion to table the approval of a stipend for the interim committee, uh, so that all. Board members can be involved in the discussion of it.
Is that how we did that, Joe?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
He made a motion to table. Until all board members can be present to have a say. Is that proper?
Yes.
Then we need a second. We have a motion and a second to table the, uh, interim committee stipend. This is something that needs to be discussed prior to run end, as I understand, um. Prior to the thirtieth, I believe, uh, so we need to possibly look at a special meeting sometime this week. Um, where we can go over this and figure it out. Wednesday would be ideal. So Dee is out of state and a little out of town Thursday through Sunday and Sarah's out on Wednesday. So.
On Thursday, Sunday.
Around Thursday.
Yes.
You too?
I'm.
You too.
It's Thursday.
Okay, how long do we need to get this posted? Twenty four hours? We can't even do this tomorrow. And you're gone Wednesday? Okay, we won't spend a lot of time hashing this out right now, but we have to figure it out.
Did you go online?
Thursday through Sunday. Wednesday. Thursday through Sunday. Thursday. Friday.
Thursday, I could be back Thursday early though.
And D is Thursday. Friday through Monday. Thursday.
Oh, Thursday.
Fridays.
Friday through Sunday. No plans to.
Um, do we know what happens if we don't get this done? Well, I don't know what happens. I just answered my, I should have tapped mine.
I think it was the recommendation of Advocates that it needs to be completed.
Is there a certain time on Monday it needs done by? Or just Monday?
Um, I think it needed to be done to meet a payroll deadline. When is that?
Typically, in order for payroll to land, they do it two to three days prior. If you don't get no more of that, will, will we submit for payroll to land with, with the turnaround time?
She don't know, that's the department. So if it needs two days.
It's really to be needed by this week.
Not, no, we need it by like Wednesday. It's too late for tomorrow.
Can we do, no, practice it out for me? I was gonna say later on Wednesday? Uh, yeah, cause I'd be too late. She's two hours ahead.
So she thought she could make possibly a Wednesday evening work. We, we're gonna have to be intentional with our time.
Do you, uh, you're out there on Wednesday?
Will probably be driving back either around four, three or four-ish. So I could probably do something at probably about four. If I can, it's gonna be a, a phone. Could you make Wednesday around four work or? Hold on.
Yes.
I say yeah, but. It's not, we'll deviable to make that work. It'd be at six o'clock per time.
I don't have any, any idea. Can we tentatively set it for? I can't make that work. I'm on a.
What time are you leaving on Thursday?
I'm in for a six hour drive, so as early as possible. Um, I can rearrange my schedule maybe for Wednesday. Can we set it ten thirty-four Wednesday afternoon? Can I reach out to DNC? Should be available. Once we have that nailed down, I'll have Joe send an email to everybody, just so we, I'll know what we're doing.
Do we wanna aim for four o'clock? Gotta get it.
Right, at this moment, that seems to be the only best option unless we have some major roadblock. Alright, moving on. We go on that?
Nope.
No call.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Now we can move on. So item E, approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CASB membership dues. Looks like there's a three hundred and thirty-four dollar increase from last year.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CASB membership dues.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CASB membership dues in the amount ten thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Alright, item F. We are to approve the pinnacle insurance and premium.
Make a motion to approve the pinnacle insurance premium.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the pinnacle insurance premium in the amount of eighty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Questions or comments?
Did we get several quotes from different companies?
Travis is the only one that would take us.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, that made it easy, huh?
So we try.
I do believe that, correct, and if I'm incorrect to this piece, I do think that there were some conversations um, with how, because we have so many of those workman com, claims of how we can rework some of those. That would help limit the claims. I think it's to raise our deduct or raise, raise the amount that's needed and referred to become work release complaint. If I'm correct on that piece, and I think they were trying to rework some stuff because it seemed like we had, we had significant ones, but also so many minimal ones that they were trying to say, how can we, um, minimize the amount of times that we're pulled out of that piece, um, which does make us look like a pretty terrible candidate.
For the claims that we had were, you know, I fell, but I don't want no medical, I don't want nothing else. We still put that in there as a vet or refusal. And so I think those, just like our normal insurance accounts, they claim against us even though it's a zero client. So I think that's probably the accident, because I don't, I don't recall the terrible, not part of it, there was a lot of lost work, but I think some of those negative, or those zero payouts, if you will, were still considered a hate. So, that's part of that. Ooh, with the horn.
Copper plate.
Copper plate.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Item G, approve the GoGuardian renewal.
Make a motion to approve GoGuardian renewal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the GoGuardian renewal in the amount thirty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Questions or comments?
Do these programs that are in, implemented, do they catch quite a bit of things for our students?
The filtration beacon stuff? Yeah, correct, you're babbling. Code it.
Sorry, I hear you guys with the hashtag. What was the question?
More on the beacon software.
If it catches a lot of, uh, a lot of expressed, like, do we have a lot that for safety concerns?
Yeah, so, uh, not last year, the year before, we had a, the same type of software with another company. And it was monitoring like the chat, the emails with the students. And we did apparently get a lot of like at-risk emails, like maybe some suicidal alerts or some drugs, like, and some of them were false reports. So like when I did get those alerts in my emails, I did, of course, I had to go through them one by one. And like, kinda like investigate. Some of them were really ones that we, we needed to react to. Sometimes I got them at ten, eleven o'clock at night and I had to reach out to Richie and like, hey, this seemed really serious and you had to do a wellness check and just to make sure and then of course follow up like a counseling session and like within the buildings and everything, so. I do, I do wanna implement that again. The original company that we were using it just flat out just stopped operating. And I needed to find an alternative. I tried to renew it last year. I didn't get it in time to the superintendent at the time to get it approved, so that's why I, I was trying to get it approved now. Um, even though it is a new add-on, it is a renewal in sense.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Alright, thank you. Item H.
Don't go anywhere. Approve the purchase of Chromebooks.
This was that concept that Kim was talking about. And, and I guess just to give her some time to do some more digging, because when I talked to Heather and even Shay, they broke the vibe, think that that was included in there. But Kim, for some reason, wasn't finding it in there. So, I think it'd be a safe bet just that we can table H and I just for a moment until we can really dig through, see to verify that that was or not included in next year's budget. Um, before we commit to it. Sorry to go, it's not nothing against you, but we had a conversation today and Jared just had to verify that she worked at C and D. I was almost certain that Heather had sent that over. So I think we need to fine tune and dig that before we.
Just wanna make sure it wasn't overlooked and it's in a section that it shouldn't be. Or if it's not in there at all, that we make sure that it's reflected before, uh, we make that decision piece with it.
And simply, it's kinda gonna be somewhat of a rush because these quotes expire and then especially with tariff stuff, we're gonna probably see a decrease on the next quote. Typically, that's how it is with electronic stuff, so, uh, I'll work on this along with Dakota here in the next few days just to make sure, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, by my, yeah, because with all the tariffs and stuff, I know it's been up and down. We got these pricing pretty, pretty cheap on the vendor because he was warning me a lot because of the tariffs. Um, but also, if we need to get all of these ready to go by registration in school, it, it is kinda nice to try to get that before then, try to get it going. I know even now, we've been through intermediate building and we needed to replace fifty of them because of issues with Chromebooks, batteries going out, expanding and everything else, so. We definitely wanna get that in place before school started as well, through all my classrooms. So, if we're still in a rush with this, I understand with that. I just don't know how much farther you were gonna push it.
It's something that can be resolved by Wednesday.
That was just, you took the words out of my mouth, so if we can get on this tomorrow and figure it out, then we can put that on the agenda for Wednesday, Monday's meeting.
So I'm gonna need a motion.
I'm gonna do. I'll make a motion to table the Chromebooks and computer purchases. Can I do both of them or just one at a time? One at a time, half separate, by your consent. So H first, the Chromebooks. Second.
I have a motion and a second to table the Chromebook purchase of Chromebook computers. Any questions or comments? These purchases that they're reviewing, this isn't the proper rotation of technology, it's technology's turn to update the computers for staff.
Correct.
And so we have done this since COVID. We've gone one-to-one, we have budgeted for this constant update in technology, so thank you for checking on that.
Yeah, like you said, I'm, I'm about ninety-nine percent sure that was Heather or Shay looked at it there and we talked about it and then.
It seems like we built it that way.
Yeah, since I've started, I know this originally started during COVID with Parker. But even since I've started, every year we have gotten Chromebooks. The count has dropped slightly because, of course, we had S R funds, so we were getting three hundred a year. And now, like this year, we were gonna drop a bunch for two hundred, which would still be enough to do what we need. But every year we talked about getting Chromebooks and staff rotation laptops to replace the old ones, so. It's kinda interesting that.
I think that original figure was at a hundred and twenty and we shaved it down.
Yeah.
That's why, just Jared reminded me of that, so I, I'm almost certain that figure was sent through, so.
So if it's not accounted for in the budget, would it be something that we'll still move forward with?
I think with her talking with her nine hundred plus, sir plus, or carryover for this year, that might be a possibility was, we can do it out of listeners. But if we're gonna have that much carryover, um, just because we are gonna need them. So, that might be an option as well.
She sounded like she was pretty confident that there was room in the budget for it, it just wasn't validated possibly.
Yeah, and, and, and what made this kinda more difficult, just to be as fully transparent, is, I mean, we just had a finalized A P this afternoon. Just to double check, make sure that logistics, they even have the Zoom link, we're good to go. And it just was something that we came across that just I wanted to see it. And, and it just was a, it just was a funky deal that, um, we, we couldn't find it in a moment in the time we had before the meeting, but I wanted to make sure that we had concreted in.
And just because you two are into this kind of role, when we budgeted for this recurring charge in our tech department, it is because we have that excess of COVID funds where we were able to take our district one-to-one. And we really didn't wanna take five big steps backward by not maintaining that hugely light up that we got. Um, so I know you guys have mentioned that you kind of cut that budget down, but I want to remind you that we put it in place for a reason. Um, during all of the, um, meet and confers, our teachers are constantly reminding us that we need to be staying up to date with technology for our students and themselves, just so we can keep offering what we need to. So be cognizant of that when we're cutting those funds, that they're there for a reason, not just, it's not fun money. We were really trying to maintain that one-to-one we had in place.
And, and with that piece, just cause I, I hear you on that side, part of that conversation really was tightening up how, how we're assessing whenever we get, at the end of the year, how many broken computers we have throughout the school year. How much of that is the district budgeting? To just replace computers? Do we have policies in place when a kid gets upset and snaps a computer? What do we do with that piece? How do we recoup that money so that we're not just constantly, even though we have it within that budget, how are we still making sure that we're being as cognizant as we can with that rotation? Was something we wanted to look at as we started looking at these numbers, saying, hey, if we're gonna try to fine tune the number piece of it, we, we really have to fine tune the backend of it and make sure that we're not, you know, there was one piece for chargers. And how we're constantly putting out chargers, is it just a defective charger? Is it something that we're doing? Let's using them along, so a lot of those conversations to make sure that, um, as we know, this is a big spend and it is an initiative that we wanna keep for our kids. Then we're doing everything on the backend to make sure that it's, it's used appropriately too.
Thanks for elaborate. You're not trying to cut it, you're just.
Just trying to streamline, make sure that we're not, we're not
Perfect.
misuse and thing, you know, cause everything costs a dollar. And so we're just trying to make sure that, you know, um, if we can go after processes and, and technol, not necessarily technology, but processes, for people, that's always my hope. And so, you know, as we, as we start looking at some of these things, I wanna look at that rather than even look at the other.
No, that's how I definitely feel too. As long as, like, we're in such a heavy technology environment nowadays, every curriculum is online. And it's hard, like, we wanna stay one-to-one, we wanna provide everything, so like, as long as we can provide that, every year I always hear that like technology's cut and cut and cut. But like, I just wanna make sure like we could provide students and staff with what they need, so as long as we could do that, like, I'm fine, it's just. And then now like, there's, we might even push more online schooling, like do like a whole separate entity. So now we would, in each, like make sure we have the, the resources for that. But I know I've been talking to Jared about even pushing for that, just to make sure we have everything we need and if we do, what's like a lot of the technical like background, like, okay, if they're all fully online, do we, if they ask for like mobile hotspots? Do we need to provide that? If they have a hard time with like internet at home, they can't fight it because like they can't afford it. And we need to do that and we need to pay for like the filtering for it because legally we need to provide safe internet. So like, there's a lot of like those little things that like keep popping up and we just, I just wanna make sure like we can provide that too.
Perfect. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Item I, approve the purchase of staff laptop computers.
I'd like to make the motion to table, uh, the staff's laptop computers.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table the purchase of staff laptop computers. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. AI Ola, aye.
Mrs. SI Ola, aye.
Mrs. Hines, aye.
Mr. Coleman, aye.
Alright, item J, approve the annuity renewal.
I make a motion to approve the annuity renewal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the annuity renewal in the amount of forty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Questions or comments?
Are you starting to sweat over there?
Yeah. I'm actually gonna be secretive, stop.
I looked at Ken and I'm like. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Edgenuity is the online platform utilized by Tiger Trades. Still living it? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. A I Ola.
I.
Mrs. S I Ola.
I.
Mrs. Hines.
I.
Mr. Coleman.
I.
Light at the end of the tunnel. Item K, approve the SITC twenty-five, twenty-six renewal proposal.
I make a motion to approve this. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six renewal proposal.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the SITC, which is Colorado School District Self-Inurance Pool, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six renewal proposal in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. A I Ola.
I.
Mrs. S I Ola.
I.
Mrs. Hines.
I.
Mr. Coleman.
I.
Item nine, more comments? Um, I have one. I appreciate seeing all of the additional things happening at the junior senior time. The, uh, outdoor, I don't know what it is, they're like the shiner or something, I don't know. Mr. Samora is running it. Um, my daughter really loves Introduction to Girls Ball. The opportunities that we're providing at our secondary level are top-notch. I really appreciate the thought going into engaging those students in a time when maybe they are not. It might set them up for a successful school year. Um, I like to see the football players already getting after weightlifting. They have some state champs in the making, I'm sure. Um, but really, I appreciate the most all of our staff coming together to work through this hard time collectively. I really appreciate the effort going into it.
I have a few, few comments. Um, the summer lunch program seems to be working really well. I hear it's very busy during that whole time slot that they are giving out lunches. Um, so that's really good to hear. There was one day I heard people were waiting like thirty minutes in line. Because there was so much traffic going through to get lunches. Um, and it's really good thing we're providing to the community. Um, I also wanted to give recognition to one of our teachers. Um, she's in the semi semi-finalist for Teacher of the Year. Uh, I think that's really awesome. Um, Ms. Remick at the primary school. Uh, it just shows, you know, the the quality teachers that we have here and the dedication they have to not only the students, but to the community.
Anybody else? I, I guess I will. Um, had a really good Bosie's meeting, uh, the other week. Uh, they're doing a new scale on the state on how well they're doing and our Bosie's does very well. It does. With the graduation, uh, rates, they did drop because of the online school with Los Anamis. So that does make it look bad, but it actually doesn't really count because it's just saying that it takes them another year or so for our kids to graduate. But we're still pretty high for the state. Um, other than that, uh, you know, their budget, we just passed their budget. It was really good too. Um. Then we also had a DAC meeting recently. Not representing them, but none of the parents want to come. So, um, that was a really good one. We did, we talked about mental health, we talked about all kinds of stuff, about the roof of the high school, about all kinds of really good stuff that I would really I really would like more parents to come. And I think that was one of the best turnouts we've had for a really long time. I think there was only like maybe two parents that I normally don't see there, but there was other ones I, I don't see. So I liked it. So that's pretty much it.
All right. With that, we go to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.